Tree, which we were just at enjoying some popsicles and some wonderful family festivities going on. But we are at capacity at forty six students in both first grade and kindergarten. And I'll have some more to speak to that in the opening of schools portion of this. But I can assure you that Dr. Borden has taken his exemplary staff and is fully confident in their abilities to provide the quality and high standards of education. And should that be compromised, I will certainly be coming back to this committee with plans to fix it, should that become compromised. But as of right now, we are very confident both in the talents and the abilities of our educators, as well as the resources we have available to us, as well as the ability granted to the administration in the existing CBAs in order to move support where it is needed, regardless of where that grade level or that need is. And again, I'll speak to that a little bit later.
Can I interrupt you real quick? And you may have spoken to it and I didn't hear you. For excuse me, Matunik and Peacedale has the kindergarten sections, but it doesn't have the class sizes. Is there?
As of right now, the the sections of the actual sizes are still being built by the principals. So there might be one section that has that has more. So there might be a so in terms of because we know at West Kingston, they are completely balanced at twenty three apiece. In the other sections, one might have another. And at the time that we put this together, the actual final classroom rosters to speak to each classroom were not set yet. Thank you. Next slide, please. So as I stated, we were able to do the comparison. Before I get into that comparison, here are some of the highlights or some of the themes that that jumped out to me. We are seeing grade level cohorts fairly stable. So what I mean by that is that our grade last year's grade one at the various schools, when they become or move on this year to grade two, those numbers are staying consistent. And in many cases, those numbers are going up by a few numbers in most cases. The most dramatic shifts in enrollment are is really in the patterning where we are seeing that enrollment shift away from the elementary grades and now really going into this building here and into middle school. And we see that by the fifth grade cohort. It's especially pronounced in the fifth grade breakdown that I'll give you for Peacedale Elementary. That was a very, very large section of fifth graders that that cohort of fifth graders are from all three schools coming to Peacedale or excuse me, coming to Broad Rock and becoming sixth graders has put a major shift towards the secondary grades, or in this case, the middle grades. What I would also say is that we have a larger shift as well. Grade eight was it last year was a fairly large cohort. They have now moved and become freshmen at the high school. That's a great thing as there are now, I believe they're the largest class this upcoming school year numbering, I believe, over two hundred or around two hundred at South Kingston High School, which is good because the graduating class of last year was the largest class. However, the new freshman class supersedes that. And for the public and on the fiscal end, what I would like to make sure that people understand is that the reductions that we did see initially or were anticipating in enrollment and as well as these enrollment shifts were anticipated and were accounted for in the this year's fiscal fiscal year twenty five presented to you at the time by Superintendent Littlefield and Assistant Superintendent Myers. So while in some cases, as we go through it and we compare year to year, things are different. In most cases, these were as especially as it comes. While we weren't sure that we would, I'm sure, get to contractual caps and max at West Kingston. The numbers there for the potential to be in the upper or mid to upper forties was that potential was there and accounted for last year and planning for this fiscal year. Next slide, please. So I'll start with the or for you to take a look at our year to year comparison. Here are our three elementary schools. The first one is when school began last school year. And then we have the June fifth and we you can see some of the attrition in terms of that happened during the course of last school year. So the first two columns again are twenty three, twenty four school year. The last column is what we anticipate to open school with this year. And then in the the number to the right of that last column is the difference between the end of last school year and the beginning of this year for that school. So while it relates to that school, we are talking about entirely or in most cases, some different cohorts and makeups of school. But I did want to just highlight for you some of the shifts that are occurring. And as I had pointed out earlier, you can see that greatest shift, as I alluded to, if we take a look at Peacedale, grade five over last year to this year. Last year's cohort, beginning at ninety or excuse me, for fifth grade, beginning at ninety, ending the year at eighty nine. However, then those fifth graders become sixth graders and they'll you'll see those numbers reported in Broad Rock. And we've now see this year's fifth grade class at sixty four. I'll draw your attention just one year back at grade four for Peacedale. When I talked about that consistency, so we started that cohort with sixty three. At the end of the year, it was once again sixty three. And as those fourth graders became fifth graders this year, that cohort stays stable and actually sees a increase of one. So if you essentially track a grade level across last year and then drop down one in the final column, you can see that longitudinal cohort for that grade level for each school. Overall, this year, to begin the year, it's anticipated that Matunik Elementary will have an additional two students more than last year. Peacedale Elementary has currently has twenty four less students. Again, that was anticipated due to that grade five class, excuse me. And West Kingston currently has three less students than it ended last year with. However, fifteen students less than it began last school year with. Next slide, please.
Can I?
Please.
Sorry. This is a nitpicky thing.
Absolutely.
It's only for ease of viewing for others. Because if one were to just not hear your narrative and just look at these numbers, it would look like grade five, forty two, the beginning of the year, forty at the end of the year, and then starting in with fifty five. We know you and we know this, that the cohort shifts. And you just explained it nicely. But one method to make that easier for the for the eye is to color code those and stagger.
Just absolutely.
Just to make it easier to not have to have a narrative. If someone were to clip this.
Yep.
It can be used how they seek it.
Absolutely understood. And what we can do is we can we can color code them the best that I that I can for consistency, while also not making a cornucopia of colors and make it look like Skittles spilt everywhere. But we I can certainly to do that and make sure that that's available to the public as well. So the next slide, if we're ready, I'm sorry, if any other anything else regarding elementary enrollment. Okay. Thank you for the feedback. We will. Yep, and we can we can get that, make that change and make the and post that publicly on the website if need be. Okay, shifting to shifting to what I would refer to as our secondary level or middle and high school levels. We see that currently this building, Broad Rock Middle School, is now has twenty seven more students than it did last year. And we see South Kingston High School, based on the comparison between the end of last school year and the anticipated kickoff of this school year, we see an increase of twenty three students. You can also see the grade nine class, the largest in South Kingston High School, now over two hundred. Or excuse me, at two hundred. And last but not least, if we want to take this entirely at a district as a district in grade bands, here you will see the the pre K numbers that again, originally, when we only had those at that sixty one, if we go across pre K and it goes sixty four and then increased last year to seventy three. And then this year is at sixty one. If that if we didn't change that number right now, based on previous reports that had been given off of the last spreadsheets, that would have only read thirty four and it would have looked like we were still down or decreased in enrollment in comparison to last year. That is not the case. As you can see, as you drop to the very bottom during the course of the twenty three, twenty four school year, we for whatever reason or for a variety of reasons, had a decline of forty nine students. Currently comparing what the end of last school year to this current school year anticipated, we have a net increase currently of eleven students. Again, I would caution that that is occurring across lots of different schools. And I would say that it, you know, while I have not done a study of twenty two, twenty three or twenty one, twenty two school year, there's all, you know, in terms of attrition during the course of the school year, just as if just as future growth is also possible, a decline is also possible. However, as of right now, we are slated to begin this school year with more students in the district than last school year. Before I move on, are there any questions or suggestions regarding the secondary comparison? Okay, thank you so much. Next slide, please. So regarding the opening of of schools. Sorry, let me get to my notes here. First, I will apologize both to the committee and to the community for the confusion. After speaking with council, because we were not voting or because it was not necessary to change the dates associated with the school year, the calendar itself and the information contained in it and updating it to reflect at the current school year operations was not necessary for a vote. It was necessary to inform the committee, especially regarding the Broad Rock start and end time change. However, the the need for the committee to approve changing the start and end times on the calendar itself was not necessary. And so my my sincere apologies for bringing that to your attention as a voting matter when in fact it was not or did not need to be. And again, my apologies to the to the community if they believed or got the impression that we were looking to change either the start or the end dates that was promulgated last year by this body. So as part of this report, I am pleased to let you know that we will be changing because it does not have to do with the days that schools are or are not in session, that we will be making the change to the calendar to reflect the start and end times that have been promulgated and shared with you at the previous meeting. I'm very pleased today to talk about that school has, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mr. Prazza.
Yes.
Can you just enlighten us on in what manner has the start and end time changed for Broad Rock been communicated to families?
Certainly. So we communicated once we had all of the administration on board, as well as all three bargaining units, making sure that they agreed that it was a management that the start and end times, as long as they were meeting contractual obligations, was a management right. Once that was confirmed with administration and and the school principals, both at the high school and the middle school, I decided to make that change. We then use Mr. Lonergan's talents to promulgate that to the community at large, both from the district perspective as well as Mrs. McNeese, Principal McNeese here, shared that with the Broad Rock community. Additionally, we reflected that change in our last meeting in terms of informing this body and the the public at large regarding that start and end time. We had already started both Mr. Lonigan as well as our facilities and transportation director in terms of communicating the new transportation plan regarding the two tiered busing. And so communications about start end times and the changes that would be accompanying this year, while it did not did not include the five minute buffer that we built in or the later time for the middle school. We did begin that at the beginning of this school year. And then once we took advantage of the management rights to shift that time, it was then immediately communicated with families.
Thank you, Mr. Prazza.
So so in speaking of start and end times, the start time for our new school year for faculty and staff, actually, for some began yesterday. We began with a new faculty orientation yesterday, and we were pleased to welcome them. And we're grateful to members of our technology team, as well as our bargaining units who came and made sure that our new employees have everything that they need to know, as well as their login credentials and access to not only the curriculum, but the tools that we have to offer that they can utilize to educate our students. However, it was also a great pleasure today to have our first orientation or convocation with the entire faculty and staff at at the high school that occurred today. And thanks. Normally, I won't speak for Mr. Seeger, but I will on this case where there's definitely a high point for us today and the energy that our faculty, staff and members of the community brought. Tuesday can't get here fast enough, not that I'm gonna wish a long weekend away. But we are very excited because once we add in that that student energy, great things are going to happen and we're very excited. And but our adults are not done yet for their long weekend as we have a full day of professional development. This professional development, I'll remind the committee, I believe, was entered into or the creation of the this year's professional development day was entered into as a memorandum of understanding last year and was part of this, the existing CBA that gave over or shared collaboration between administration and all of the bargaining units in terms of what professional development activities were both needed and wanted and the format. And so the amount of choice and voice, even for those who are going to be getting professional development on new curriculum that and is going to make up the bulk of their time and is is going to be required, the fact that this committee worked in at least one element of that day that will give adults that choice to pursue interests, both either that they are interested in learning more about or collaborating with colleagues. The menu of options is robust and extensive, to say the least. And once completed, you know, might be a nice agenda item depending for for future teaching and learning so that you can see again, not only the the what our faculty and staff's time, talent and treasure goes towards, but what also they bring to the table already and how they're training and collaborating with one another. It's a it's exciting to see. And and my thanks again go out to the previous administration and members of that professional development committee for putting that together. In terms of staffing, I had alluded to, again, we are at a full capacity at West Kingston Elementary School. We've spoken, I speak daily with Dr. Borden, as well as any other principal. He has reassured me that he is fully comfortable and with the in all grade levels. I'm sure he's proud of all of his teachers. However, he highlights these as an area of he has shifted the paraprofessional support and has assured me that again, should those conditions change, while he doesn't expect it, he will certainly let us know. And I assure you that should those conditions change and teaching and learning become inequitable or experiences become uneven, that we will be here before this body to come up with potential solutions. And that includes probably everybody who's in this room already, as it will be both a physical plant issue, as there's only one room left in West Kingston, as well as a logistical issue because of potentially busing and transportation, as well as a financial issue that will take the the talents of our CFO and everyone here to to find where those resources, should they be deemed required, we will do that deep digging and we ensure that that will happen. In terms of staffing for the other buildings or in terms of the district as a whole, we are I'm going to list some the vacancies that are still here. However, I will highlight for the committee or assure the committee, as well as the community, that both our district administration, as well as building administration. When I talk about these positions, although they are currently unfilled, they do have leads, they are all posted to school spring. And many in some of cases, we are doing our due diligence to make sure that we have investigated all options before return before. Investigated all options before return, before going to other options. Ie making sure that we have exa- that we have interviewed people who currently hold the certifications for these positions. Before looking to go to retirees and taking advantage of those as is required by state statute. So uh I will also assure you that on Tuesday, there will be a qualified, caring. Member of South Kingstown Public Schools in each one of these classrooms to greet students and get their school year started. On a positive note. So again, while these are vacancies, all of the principals have plans in place to make sure that a. Cert- that a certified, caring, and in most cases, especially towards the primary grades, known. Individuals to not only the students, but also the the school communities are in place. So because of various um professional and personal moves, uh, the district currently has two. Uh, full-time positions available in pre-K. Uh, we currently have a point-five high school science position, which is a long-term substitute. That is only a half year, so that uh is three classes and that uh is currently only scheduled for the first semester. We just received a notice of a point-five high school art for a long-term. Substitute position, or we have that need also for the first semester. Uh, we now, and it has been posted, uh, we now have a one-point-O elementary special ed coordinator position available. And uh, last and certainly not least, we currently have a one-point-O one-to-one teaching assistant. Uh, at Matunik Elementary School, currently vacant, posted. Uh, but again, there are options that we have at our disposal uh for all of these before we exercise them. Uh, again, the administration is just doing its its due diligence to make sure uh that we have left no stone unturned. Before I move on, uh, and ask Mr. Mahoney to to come on forward to discuss uh busing. I'll see if there are any questions, comments or uh concerns or actions regarding staffing for the opening of this school year.
What are the um? Requirements for those special ed coordinator for elementary besides special education certification?
So uh, um, there are certain, as a promotional position, as of right now, it is my, it is my understanding and um. That those are the primary pieces. Um, my concern with filling, so we worked to make sure with the union. Uh, or NEASK uh regarding that position. Um. Because when we, if we wait too long to post something, that it gets posted as a one-year only. Um, and then we lose the potential for people who are looking for tenure-track positions. Uh, as such, they agreed. Um, and because we had received that re- resignation, that is posted as a tenure-track position. However, they are also cognizant of um certain certifications who may be interested in that. Position that are harder to come by and tha- than others and that displacing or jump, having someone jump to that position. While vacating uh another very difficult one uh would not be in the best interest of students and the organization. And so we've uh. We've agreed to to work together um once the, if there are any internal candidates, but currently uh it is special education. Certification as well as time, uh, years of service, um, and experience in the elementary classrooms as a special educator.
Thank you.
Any further questions down the table? No? Okay.
Thank you. And in that case, I it's happy to turn it over to Mr. Mahoney to discuss what is not on anybody's mind. In the community, transportation.
Not at all, not at all. Uh, hello, everybody. Thank you for having me up here. Good to see everybody. Hope you had all, had a good summer. Um, so I'll start where we've been and kind of what's led today and then currently what we have for school opening. Uh, so working with the transportation subcommittee, uh, our busing vendor, Ocean State Transit. And the S K police, we we spent the past, you know, from summer till now. Um, obviously putting the combined routes into place, uh, which again are to um. You know, give us better route times, not sending two buses into the middle of West Kingston going over Doug Bray, Doug Way Bridge Road, passing each other four minutes apart. Uh, environmental impact, um, hopefully reduction in in time, you know, the time we're using buses, a lot of, a lot of great reasons we chose to. Combine those two routes. Um, and just to update everybody on that, every bus uh will have working camera systems. A lot of them have been updated. I was with the bus company on their annual training the other day. I believe eleven of the buses so far that didn't have the digital systems have been upgraded over the summer. So almost every bus is now upgraded to their digital camera systems and every bus route will have a monitor and a driver on it. Um, you know, again, for for maximum safety, health and and physical safety. Um, so also with part of working with the police and the administrators, we've looked at every site to kind of see where we could maximize uh. Best practice in the past and best practice for this upcoming year. Uh, some of the upgrades, especially of of highly Broad Rock with having the new busing system in here. We will have, be having twenty-one buses coming. We had eighteen last year here. So we're only adding three additional buses with combining the routes that will physically be showing up onsite. Um, as part of that, we've decided to move the special education buses to a different location onsite. To free up the whole front of the building. So the whole front of the building will now just be the big buses. Uh, again, we also had statewide buses, which have many buses, which we had ran into delays. They are not part of our bus bus fleet. They go through statewide busing and. There were some communication issues where they actually held up our buses, which then held up the elementary route. So now those buses will be in the back of the site and not be blocking anyone. Uh, I'd also like to thank the uh highway department. They came through on Monday. And on Broad Rock Road, when you pull out of here, you will be able to see both ways when you're turning out of here. They were able to cut everything back. We do have some trees that are getting removed up front, but they were kind enough to do that for us. They brought in their. Giant machines that they have and pushed everything right back for everybody's safety. Um, so that's just again, what we've been looking at is trying to maximize the safety onsite and and keep the efficiency going. So. Each day can start promptly on time. Um, our current route, so. Uh, I was just up in West Kingston, letting a lot of parents know. Dr. Borden called me up with the kindergarteners and uh the kindergarten parents and we were the, uh, to talk about the busing. So originally, we were going to send out the routes uh last Wednesday morning and I was working with uh Holly Fahey, the uh manager over at Ocean State. And on Tuesday night about six o'clock, we found that we actually had a big error in our data that was going over to Ocean State. Um, so we held off from sending them out last Wednesday morning. I'm glad to report that the, all the routes will be going out tomorrow morning. Um, Big Bus, Special Education, Transition Academy. Um, and Proud and Mon Senior Clark have already received their loud routes last week and were able to send us any modifications they needed or people who didn't know. They had to reach out to South Kingston to get private school busing. So we've actually, those are already fixed and have been sent to all the Proud and Mon Senior Clark families. And their update is going out tomorrow also. So everyone out there, routes are coming tomorrow morning. I swear I don't live in S K. Don't show up at my house, please. Uh, no, but they are going out and and we've been trying to field all the calls, emails, trying to get back to everybody who's been asking. Um, it was about six hundred, five to six hundred students' data that either had the wrong grade level or. There's a data point on it, so when it pulled into the system, it wouldn't go incorrectly and they were coming out as a null, so they weren't actually getting routed for a bus. So. Um, like to thank Holly at Ocean State too. Um. She recently lost some staffing over there, so she's been, once again, like the last two years, doing this on her own and she's done a great job, so. That's where we're at. Who's got questions? And and we are on track with the busing that was last reported. Uh, we have not added additional busing with the current numbers and totals that we've been getting.
I don't have a question. Um, I just have a thank you. T, we worked all summer long and our work all summer long was really you and Holly working all summer long. And uh, just your transparency, your honesty, just right now, what you've just explained with the snafu. Um, it just is, it's been really awesome to work with you and with Holly. Um, and our transportation uh subcommittee chief, everybody. It was, it was definitely a a a team effort and um. And you do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. And it's, and I will say it's it's. Last couple of years, I know, I know I come up here and I'm pretty blunt, but having the support from our new administration, our CFO and from everybody else around. Mr. Lynch, everybody in the district uh who's willing to chip in or ask if you need a hand or, you know, we have a really great team here, so. And you guys, you guys, thank you for supporting us. So. I'm not gonna just say you're welcome. No, that's boring. I'm not boring. Sorry. Anybody else, any questions or?
I just, I just want to like flush out on the, on the comments here. Again, I echo Kate's uh statements about thanking you for all the work you've done over the summer and and being part of the committee. Uh, subcommittee. Um, I do also want to remind all of the community, there are a lot of moving parts with the busing. It's not like you set a route. And forget it. You can't just have the same as some previous year that you have, we will rework every year. And there's always last minute changes, last minute things. And I think the last couple of years, you've done an excellent job of of. Uh, handling that and unfortunately the, my blood to delays and getting the routes out, but I think it means we're gonna have a more. Solid route going forward, even if it is a little bit delayed. It's a more consistent and solid route, so there's not a bunch of changes in the first couple of weeks in school like there were a couple of years ago. So I think we've done a great job. And I I look forward to seeing the results of of the beginning of this school year and hopefully uh everything will go smoothly.
Yeah. Oh, great. And then again, in that, I mean, even. You know, see the uh sunny side of it is it actually worked out well too with the finalization of the routes because the drivers reviewed the routes. Uh, with Holly due to the snafu before they were able to publish and they actually found some that said. Hey, we've driven this bus for four years. You know, I know that one-eighty-five South Road, you know, is what you want to put on there, but if you make it one-eighty-seven, it's safer because of this, that. The drivers, the historical knowledge, were actually to go, able to go through the fine-tooth comb, which we hadn't done in the past. So to give them that access, who, some of these drivers have been here for fifteen-plus years and know the town like the back of their hands. So I think that was a good. Process on Ocean State's end to implement in the years going forward to have their drivers have more input on the route structure and certain stops around town.
I'd just like to say thank you to the transportation subcommittee and to Mr. Mahoney for getting this together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, miss.
Okay. Thank you very much. And moving uh from. One uh department or or element of schools that when it's. Working the way it's supposed to, nobody says anything because they just assume it's going to, going to work and moving to another one that people kind of assume the same thing. Uh, is technology. Um, one of those things that nobody kind of says, just like transportation, oh, the buses are running on time. Thank you. No, but when they're not, they will, uh, they'll certainly let you know. But it's also, nobody ever thanks the tech department. Hey, thanks for making sure the wifi is on or that the uh. That, that I needed, I didn't need to plug this in or things are working. Um, so. Uh, Mr. Snow is not with us today, but um, I I'd just like to go through and I'll go through very, very quickly. Um, but just want to give you a taste of what goes on over the course of the summer. Um, that is already completed and there are still some things that if they're, they're happening this week. Um, that will be done by the end of this week that I'm not gonna mention uh to get ready for the start of the school year and. Uh, my sincere congratulations are and thanks to to him and every member of his team. So cybersecurity frame and for policy for network security, add Arctic Wolf off-site depository for all emergency procedures, contact and retainer for instant support, done. Uh, rollout Mindcast for all devices to offer robust email security solutions to protect organizations from areas. Uh, various email bl- based threats is done. Replace two high school computers for the SolidWorks AutoCAD and the Photo Booth computers for advanced processing that laptops cannot support lab is done. Uh, updated all Google server sync programs for all buildings. Upgraded Paper Cut Pro, our our copiers to new server for all macro copiers for the, in the entire district and update Google security. To uh put security in for scanning features. Windows Radius Server update and migration. Cisco's wireless controller upgrades done. Install new servers for Cisco phone systems or entire phone system and upgrade software to the latest in all locations. A one-to-one rollout for South Kingstown High School, including two-hundred-and-five new student laptops for the class of twenty-eight. And replace all new one-hundred-and-seventy-five laptops for second grade, inventoried, labeled, imaged and network-configured security web filter. Cisco Umbrella Client installed and tested. Return all twel- uh, two-hundred-and-twenty twelfth-grade laptops. Roll, rolled over gaggle monitoring for all student Google Drive, Gmail, chat, calendar. Go through all classroom laptops, desktops, iPads, along with all connections to all of the equipment, including Mimos, overhead projectors and the maintenance. Uh, of all of those computers. Roll over mosaic food service, Chartwell's responsibility, done. Upgrade online free and reduced lunch program, done. Update and replace with new laptop imaging systems for PDQ. Don't know what that is, but it's done. Classlink software upgrade for active directory, Skyward integration for users, install Launchpad for single sign-on with multi-factor authentication, done. Support summer school uh at both here and at the high school. That is done, as you'll hear more later. Upgrade and roll over the new bell systems for buildings supported by single wire and removal of all obsolete Dell servers is done. And again, that is not. Uh, the other items are being done this week. So again, most of that there, um. I don't know what is done and uh what those things are. But I do know that they're essential to making sure that the resources that we've purchased and that our teachers need. Uh, and that want and need and need to be in place to make sure students are scheduled, that the phones work, that the wifi works. That teachers and students have what they need to get started. Um, has been done and been going on all summer long. Uh, and so uh, technology-wise, we are ready and raring to go. And then last but not least, uh, I'm happy that Mr. Lynch is here as he can talk a little bit about some of the athletic. Programming that is going on and is ready to go as well as some changes and pivots uh that. Are also going to be, are ready to be put in place.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me. Um. Wasn't planning on coming tonight, but on Friday afternoon, uh, got an email from the Interscholastic League with the. Dreaded three letters that I didn't want to see, triple E. Um, so. And they put some documentation out through the Rhode Island Department of Health. So I let Superintendent Prazza know this weekend, um, where we were at as far as our scheduling goes. And with our practices, as we have them all set right now, we are fine with our practice. But again, now we get into games. We'll be starting contests next week. The, the sports that I'm concerned about are football, boys and girls soccer. Tennis, for the most part, um, will take care of itself because those are gonna start around four o'clock. Cross-country are gonna start around four o'clock. Field hockey, we may have to adjust some, the field hockey. The varsity will play first and they're usually in the four to four-thirty range. We may have to adjust some JV times after that. But we're ready to do that. So I called the Rhode Island Department of uh of Health this morning. We are in the high-risk category here in South Kingston. We, there are thirteen pools in this town that have been positive. So. We talked about, you know, and the Interscholastic League, when they sent it out, talked about smart scheduling. So what we're going to do. Is we're going to, in all of our home contests, we're gonna start our soccer games at five o'clock. Um, we have a football game in um, in September that we're gonna start it. We have it right now to start at five o'clock. I may have to move that a little bit earlier if I can. My goal is to get our kids off the field. In the twenty-to-thirty-minute range before sunset, so we can take that whole um. That whole right out of the equation. We don't have to worry about that. So we're working with that right now. So that's one aspect. We will have um spray cans um at. At all of our contests on the sideline for the oppo- opposing team, for our team, for spectators, and we'll take care of that. I talked to Brian, um, today, we are going to spray Curtis Corner, um. Football and soccer field as well as the upper field for field hockey. And I'll bring Brian up to to talk about how, what, where we're gonna um be spraying everywhere else. But so that's just kind of where we're at. Again, we're, we're the highest risk. And for instance, like, we're playing proud in girls soccer on Friday. Uh, the game is scheduled for six o'clock. I asked. Kelly over there, the the A D, if we could start it at five o'clock. So she's gonna make those accommodations if the referees can get there, so we should be okay there. Our away contests right now are going to stay the same times. Um, because. Right now, those, those other towns, cities are in a lower um. Lower risk than we are. And just getting back to um some of the soccer, we don't have a girls JV soccer team, so that's not gonna affect, that's easy. The boys JV soccer team will take a little bit of a hit, but I've talked to the, it's four games that were, that will, that they'll be affected. Our home games, talk to the opposing A D. Our home games, talk to the opposing ADs and we're going to try to do those on Saturday mornings, just so we can get those kids to play. So that's where we're at right now. Um, if anything changes, I will, I will let Superintendent Pedraza know, but that's, that's kind of where we're heading at this point. So. We thought we could get out, you know, the, last year was the heat index. It's been COVID, it's been triple E before. So. We're kind of used to making adjustments. So anybody have any questions? Great. Thank you.
Good for that.
Two big guys, small stage. I just let you know too, we are going to be spraying all the schools. We have done that in our past, in the past with our contracted vendor. Um, they use a chemically safe product, a lot of essential oils and certain chemicals that are. Safe for neighbors, safe for pets, but. Mosquitoes and also create a barrier to, uh, remove them. And they have two different products they use. So. But all the schools will be treated and off all the athletic fields. So for recesses and the day-to-day operations, and we've already scheduled that out. We've added, um, all the athletics and. Uh, we'll be letting neighbors know also at all the schools, just so everybody's aware, they can close their windows during the spraying process. Any question?
In, in years past, they, do we send out community notice, uh, like so in terms of our email blasts? So for. Parents who want to know what those ingredients are or those.
We had them available. The neighbors get a letter and it has the vendor's name, uh, the license number, uh, has the names of the product and then any follow through with my contact also.
Okay.
So we do, and they do put out, uh. Lawn markers at certain distances apart. So it has their contact information with their license number showing that. You know, please contact us if you have any, any questions.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Yeah, I, and I was remiss. I should have said that I'm sending, I was sending communication out to all my athletic parents just so they know what's going on. Uh, I'll be doing that tomorrow with thanks. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. And now, uh, next slide, please. Uh, it is my pleasure to have, uh, a, the next item, uh, our teaching and learning item and turn, uh, the microphone. Over to Mr. Seeger and his team in, in just one moment. Um. We've been talking actually about summer learning, uh, since my first meeting. Um, because, you know, this idea in some cases that learning stops or the last day of school, everybody goes home and. Nothing happens except for maybe some cleaning here and there and some getting some inventorying. Uh, and then, well, teaching and learning starts with the new school year after Labor Day. Um, what we hope to demonstrate here is nothing could be further from the truth. Um, we, we have learning going on year round that is purposeful, that is targeted and that is led by experts. Uh, tonight you'll be hearing about our summer learning academy, which is targeting, uh, in terms of grades K through six. And our credit recovery, uh, at the high school. Our extended school year, uh, as it relates to special ed programming will, we will present that at another time, uh, when Dr. Carson has been here longer than two days. I would remind the committee and the community who is, uh, tuned in that this takes, uh. We're highlighting as well because, um, tonight's programming. Uh, or presentation is being entirely funded this year, uh, through expiring S R dollars. And so once you hear about the great things that are going on that are again, are purposeful. Educate the entire child, use best practices, um. If we want to continue to give the community what they want and what they demand and what they deserve. Uh, those funds will more than likely need to come, uh, from local dollars. Um, and so before we get to the teaching and learning aspect, the, uh, what you're about to hear, uh, for this. What you'll hear, the wonderful things that happened, the summer learning academy, uh, the entire budget was approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Where the credit recovery came in at forty thousand dollars. So a gross price tag or a, uh, total price tag. Uh, for the community potentially in next year's budget of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. To, uh, have the opportunities that you're going to hear about here. Uh, again, I will not include E S Y as those are certain state and federal mandates that we must provide regardless of federal funding, uh, grants. Uh, and so we will also save that at another time. So at this time, Mr. Seeger and his team, welcome and thank you.
Good evening and thank you again, Mr. Pedraza for the warm welcome and the introductions for. Uh, the office of teaching and learning and the amazing team here with us tonight. So, uh. Once again, good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Pedraza. Faculty staff, administrative colleagues and all guests from the community. It is indeed a sincere honor to provide my first official teaching and learning update. As Assistant Superintendent of South Kingstown Public Schools. And my apologies for the reliance on the notes. I'm still on script for my first official report here as, uh, as Assistant Superintendent. So, uh, as, uh, Superintendent Pedraza had noted this morning. We officially welcomed our faculty and staff to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at our district convocation. Commencing a variety of collaborative conversations and activities, all with the goal of providing South Kingstown students with a safe. Positive and engaging start to the new school year. While our convocation marks a more formal kickoff, it is important to note. As noted by Superintendent Pedraza, that we take the time to recognize and celebrate the noteworthy efforts of our faculty and staff. During our summer program season. The warm humid weather did not put a damper on the dedication and effort of our faculty, staff and administrative team. Who worked through July and August to provide those safe, engaging and impactful, as you'll see. Learning experiences for our students. And, uh, again, thank you to all those who contributed to our summer programs. It's certainly quite the roster and certainly rounded out by, um, our team here this evening. We certainly need to also recognize and celebrate the learning and growth experienced. By a number, an impressive number of students this summer across our programs, which include, as noted, our summer learning academy. And our credit recovery program, which we will highlight in just a few moments. And as you will see, these programs reflect a genuine commitment to supporting students, learning and growth. We're going to start with our presentation on summer learning academy and then we will transition to our credit recovery program. And at this time. I will turn things over to our team leaders, Felicity Carroll and Corey Lennon. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And we go to the next slide. One more. So the purpose of our summer learning academy is to continue to support student growth through the summer. Mitigate the impact of potential learning loss and keep students on a path to success in the coming school year. So I'm Felicity Carroll and this is Cory Lennon. Um, the program ran Mondays through Thursdays from eight thirty to eleven thirty AM. It went from July eighth through August first here at Broad Rock. Hi.
Oh, it's tiny.
Yeah, so here I'll take that one.
Uh, this is just talking about staffing. So one of the, um, things that we contribute to the success of the program.
You guys talk to the mic only because it, uh, folks listening at home can't hear.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, one of the things that we really wanted to highlight tonight is the fact that our summer program here at Broad Rock was staffed entirely by S K S D employees. And so that put us at an advantage coming in. Um, teachers knew students. We had teachers who were able to collaborate with each other to talk about high points, like what students' needs were. They could kind of tag team in. So that's something that we really do want to kind of highlight tonight. So. We had ten classroom teachers, so we had ten classes. We had two math interventionists. So students this year, one of the model was changed a little bit. Where our classroom teachers focused on the P L P and setting goals there. And then we had math interventionists that actually took students out of the classroom to spoke, to really go in and hone in on specific math skills for the students. So that was a little bit of a different setup this year. Um, we had two teaching assistants, one that stayed with us, um, for the, the forties and one that we split with the, um, E S Y program. And we also had a school nurse and, um, and we also had clerical staff. So that was our staff for the summer.
Cute pictures. Okay. So we had fifty-eight, we had fifty-eight students overall. Uh, the average daily attendance was eighty percent and I'd like to remind you that this is not a required. Program, right? It's not like during the school year or the credit recovery program. This is all voluntary. So eighty percent. Is pretty good for an average. You know, if it was a Monday and it was rainy, the attendance went down a little bit, right? But we were really happy with that. Um, so essentially there was an intervention program. We supported reading and math. Um, the goals for each child were individualized. They were driven by the. Personal literacy plans or the personal math plans that they had during the school year. Excuse me. Each teacher looked over the previous year's plan carefully. Did some testing and developed a plan for each student. So we. Everything was individualized. Um, and we talked about the S R funding, two really key components that are so important to the children. Well. The snack, they got a snack every day from Chart Wells. That was really, really important to the kids, the time to sit and have the snack and to be given a free snack. Um, I don't think I need to explain more about that. And the transportation. I think many children wouldn't be able to come if it weren't for transportation. Okay, next.
So Felicity kind, Felicity kind of already touched on this. This is just, it was all data driven. So. At the end of the year, at the end of the MTSS, um, meetings, students had their PLPs coming into this. Our classroom teachers knew exactly what skills they would go in and they would read and figure out exactly what skills were the most important elements to make sure that. We didn't have learning loss. And in best case scenario, our students actually grew, right? But typically the system mitigate learning loss. Um. So we just kind of made sure that we had a data collection process where they went in, they collect data, they picked a goal. They then went through and progress monitored and then came back out and showed us kind of where they were, where they started and the end result.
Those, I forgot to mention too, those, that data then was added to the student's current personal. Plan either in reading or in math, so that next year's classroom teacher will see. Whether or not they went. To the summer program and we ask them always to put the attendance, what, how often they came. Um, that can be really helpful, I think, for next year's teachers. So at the end of every school year, reading and math, folks go through and close out all the plans, but for all the children who attended, we kept them open. Page was added. So we had some really great data. There were fifty-three students who attended with personal literacy plans, P L Ps. Fifty of those fifty-three showed growth in the, in the area that they were measured. And then that made a ninety-four percent growth rate. And. Really, to be honest. Of the three who didn't show growth, two had seen from beginning to end and one had the. Eightieth fraction of a drop that is so minimal, it's. I won't get into the specifics, but. Do you have a question?
I have a question as far as this is awesome. Thank you very much. Um, so the, as you, I'm, I'm glad you clarified that the data is then handed over to the incoming teacher, right? So I'm curious, um. Is there a cohesive plan as what that teacher will do with it? So if the, so if they showed growth. And the teacher sees, okay, this is where we start the school year. Obviously the, the goal would to see continued growth, but will that be tracked with these particular cohort of kids or to see if.
That's a great question.
I mean, I only ask because when you're in that environment, you're, it's such a small environment and, and you thrive in that. And then you get. You start your school year now in this big environment and like what the impact might be for the.
That's for Mr. Seeger, I think.
All right. I'm going to give it my best shot here as, um, you know, day eleven here. I'm still, uh, as you know, still. Yeah, exactly. Still trying to, you know, um, un- under- understand the context, but what, what I would say is, you know, as a kind of a global. Reaction to the question, it's a great question. And, you know, given what my understanding is of the program, again, it's grounded in students who have those existing MTSS plans, whether it's the PLPs or the PMPs. And given that we are, you know, uh, progress monitoring based on their experiences in the summer. I think that coming into the school year, the, you know, this year's, you know, teacher or teachers. Certainly have access to those PLPs and PMPs and will continue to, uh, to give the appropriate interventions and supports that are outlined in the PLP, in the PMP. And then, you know, to the degree that it's fitting or appropriate, looking at the efficacy of those interventions. And then as a team. You know, looking at that and saying, you know, what should, you know, should this goal continue? Should we look at other interven- interventions and support? So that's kind of the. You know, the ten thousand foot view as it relates to, you know, how we would, you know. Leverage what we saw here in the summer and then certainly continue on that path to continued growth. And, um, and making sure that we're closing those gaps, you know, to the highest degree possible. So I, I hope that helps to answer.
I would also say additionally, we, you have the first star screening window. So the, the PLP, because the student has the PLP, that stays with them and is now, uh, during these, actually today, I believe. Folks were going through their students' plans, whether they be I E Ps, five O fours or PLPs. Then in the first few weeks of school, we open up the star window once again and do that universal screen. What's great about this is that we, the, the teachers now are armed with. The data from this summer, they're not looking back to when last school year ended. And so they, if they see continued growth or they say, oh, well, at the end of last school year, boy, did you make some gains. And or, okay, that time between that last, uh, summer learning and now they can, uh, then strategize. And in many cases, we might see such growth. Hopefully that students would be able to come off their PLPs or PMPs as well. So the, the three windows that occur throughout the course of this school year. Uh, will provide that continuous monitoring for all students.
So that focus originally was just PLPs and then we switched it over and we looked at the data and saw that we can include the math and then, then we had the support to do math. So you'll see smaller numbers here. So now all students had. We had some students with a PLP and a PMP. And so we've, of those thirty-two students had PMP. So that's the personal math grow, goal. And so of those, we had thirty students of the thirty-two had a growth and then, um, ninety-four percent of those students. Showed growth overall. So it's very similar, you know, there are like slight differences, you know, some attendance kind of things, but amazing growth. And. What the data doesn't show, I'm sorry, I'm like a mom and I'm a teacher, is the confidence that comes out of these students. And at the end of the day. If they're walking into school with that confidence from leaving summer, you know, we had a couple of kids, we had a couple toughies this summer who, they were amazing, like they were just unbelievable. But you could see their attitude change. And so if they're walking into school in September, just feeling confident about themselves and happy to be there. And we've changed just that the summer. That's powerful.
Question. Um, I know it's a, it was a K through six program. I'm just interested in kind of the makeup. I mean, was it really heavy on the older kids or like evenly spaced? I would think there would be more of a need as kids get older, they fall farther behind. Maybe I'm just kind of looking for that information.
Excellent question. Unfortunately, what tends to happen is that because as Felicity alluded to before, it's volunteer. So when kids get into the middle school, they don't really love to come anymore. So our sixth grade, um, I'm speaking like just all quickly off the top of my head. I want to say we had about. Twelve students in the sixth grade class, um, that made that up. But yeah, it's more, you know, I don't want to go or, you know, whatever, because they don't have to. It's not like the credit recovery program. So it's not mandatory. Um, but we were pretty, it was pretty equal throughout the grades and we were really happy with the amount of sixth grade going into seventh graders that came.
That's great. That's very encouraging. Thank you.
So we did a, uh, this was Cory's brilliant idea. We did a student survey at the end of the summer. And we had ninety-four percent favorable. Um, responses. We, we gave them in both English and Spanish. If the, we had three that were Spanish speakers, so those. If the, we had three that were Spanish speakers, so those students took in Spanish, so ninety-four percent. And here are a couple of really cute, cute things that kids said that we thought we'd share with you. The first, this is our favorite. I thought I was gonna hate it, but in the end, I ended up loving it. That, that's great, you know, it speaks to what Cory, right? And someone else said it was a great program and someone else talked about wanting to have a place to hang out with their friends during recess. We found when it, it got warm in the middle, well, several times in the summer and everybody was forced to, you know, we couldn't send them outside, they all started playing together in the gym. And they loved that. And so even when it turned out to be nice enough to go outside, they had so much fun. All the kids kind of playing together, a couple of teachers brought buckets of balls and the kids were throwing balls around, but they just loved it. They really did. It was really nice.
Before I go to the wraparound camp, so I do want to acknowledge, this takes a village, right? So Brian, as we said, he's our rock star of the night. Maintenance went above and beyond to make our students comfortable. They put A Cs in every single classroom. They actually moved toilets so that our littlest learners had toilets that were appropriate for them. I mean, anything that we asked for came through and the children just had an amazing experience. We were cautious because we had to come to Broad Rock, typically at Peacedale. And so it was like, oh gosh, we're moving our littlest learners here to Broad Rock. And it was like magic wands just went through and anything that was asked for went. And these kids came in like ninety-degree days when we were like melting. It was a hot summer with smiles and just excited to be here and they kept coming back. So it was like, all right, good. And then, you know, we kind of wondered like after the first day, are they gonna come back? And they really just, it was an amazing, it was my first time doing this and it was amazing. Every day like smiles and happiness, so. But it does take a village. We had the clerical office here and maintenance and technology and just make sure that that's noted.
So we also offered some wraparound camps to children. If you could go to the next slide. Karen Butens is a social worker who supports this program. We talk about the commitment to the whole child, their whole child development and the wraparound camps really helped that. Can you go to the next slide, please? So here are a couple of sort of takeaways. Twenty-five out of fifty-eight students participated in the wraparound camp program. It provided a lot of great S E L and language skills. It gave them a longer day, which really increased their access. So where parents, so in other words, the children went to our program and then immediately get on a bus that took them either to the Y M C A or to Camp Grovesner. So that gave them a longer day, obviously very helpful to parents. It gave them a break from screen time. You know how many of those kids might have gone home and just been sitting on a screen for the day? They got a lunch at the camp and obviously lots of healthy outdoor time. Can you go to the next camp, next slide? And then again, Cory, if you could read those.
So my daughter had such an amazing experience and loved coming every day. And just to back up the wraparound camp, just to make sure that we all are clear, like what would happen was the buses would literally come here and take them to the Y M C A and to Grovesner, Monday through Thursday, and then they had a full day on Friday as well. So it's really a nice thing that was offered. All right, they enjoyed the games they played with the learning. Sorry, Felicity, you've got, I can't see, I feel like I'm gonna get that eye doctor's. At the camp, it helped tremendously to know that he was in a safe, fun environment. Why will he work rather than leaving work early every day? I mean, the thing is, at the end of the day, these children were safe, they were fed, they were happy, they were learning.
Thank you, thank you. And we're happy to answer any questions if we know the answer to them.
I don't really have a question. I just want to make a statement like I am, this is wonderful. I love the way the program is put together. I love that there's opportunity for you to put that growth in a place where teachers can go back to it, look at it and get the student, meet them where they're at and continue to work through the goals throughout the school year. And this is not a program that can just evaporate. It's a program that needs to continue. Because one size doesn't fit all, right? So we have to make sure that we accommodate in all of our students and meet in all of their needs because we do have different components already. But that's not for the whole student. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. We'd really like to see it go forward. Prior to COVID, it was a much smaller program and we'd like to see it, you know, it expanded after with the COVID money. And we'd really love to see it continue to grow. Thank you.
Have a lot of collaborated effort out there too. So, you know, we got apple seeds and we also have all of that going on with our stakeholders in the community. So I think we can work that.
So I have questions around that.
Sure.
Because we can't just make it work. We don't have the magic wand that Paris Mahoney does to move toilets. So a couple of questions. One was the transportation costs also S R funded. Okay, so this is gonna be, it's hard to even think about. And it, but it is so important that we make, we figure out a way to make it work. And I believe that the data, especially because of the surveys that you thought to do ahead of time, we need to make sure we can put dollars to data. And while we are, yes, this is awesome and amazing and wonderful experience and, and it was, to your point, safe, happy, fed, covered and learning. We need to look at it from a data-driven equals finance. So we can make sure that next July this happens. So if, if we can make, you know, we really need the data and also to prove coming in September, look at the growth and then what are those kids doing with that growth? Because I think, to your point, with the confidence leaving, so when you leave school on June twentieth and you don't show back up until September fifth, you walk back in like, oh my gosh, what, I forgot everything. I do it, everybody does it. I sometimes from meeting to meeting, I walk in like, what did that, what am I supposed to be talking about? But these kids get to leave on August twenty-fifth and get to walk in the door September fourth. And like you said, with that confidence, that in theory you can't put a price tag on, but we have to.
I think the important piece here that also is, is that once we get back to a fully, if we, assuming we can get to a fully locally funded model, what isn't shown here in, in terms of the, the cost is that if this becomes predictable, the, the recruitment and the retention and the planning in advance that we can share this out with families, we will get that, that $200,000 that we invest in this can, can grow. So I believe you didn't start sharing this information until.
It was very late.
Yeah.
It's very late.
April.
We'd really like to improve that.
Right, so if we, you know, once we, if, once we do this and we can stab, if we can establish this now as a, as something that we do, something that we are committed to for reoccurring budget cycles, we can affect the, the, it, the return on investment will reach even more students because people won't sign up for camps already. They'll, they'll know that this opportunity exists and they'll be more likely to be able to take advantage of it. So while this, you know, different F Ys are, are, each fiscal year will have its challenges. I, I believe that if we can embed this and through the data and continue to show that it is important, it is, is essential, is aligned with our core values. And then once it becomes a predictable source of funding that we are committed to, we will then continue to get that flywheel effect and that return on the investment.
We think optimally, we'd like to get something out in January saying, save the date, save the date. But, you know, administration being what it's been the last couple of years, it's been tricky to do that.
Mr. Steve.
Thank you. Hey, I just had a couple of questions for my own edification. As far as this program goes, you indicated, and I could be wrong on this, but you seemed to indicate earlier that this program did exist prior to COVID and prior to S R funds?
Prior to COVID, it was Title I funded. So I, I was running it back in two thousand fourteen or something up till now. But yeah, it was Title I only. So for a lot of the time, it was West Kingston and Peacedale only being invited. And we did K to three most of the time. One year Wakefield was invited. It depends, you know, depends on the schools, but.
And that depended on the amount of Title I funding available for the program at that time? Is that how that worked?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm not clear on how that all worked. Colleen Lisi was superintendent then.
Gotcha, I'm just trying to understand.
Assistant superintendent.
That's, that's fine. I was just trying to understand, so the expansion of the program really came about because of S R funding?
Because of COVID, right? And, and we did K to eight for a couple of years and then they decided to do K to six this year.
Okay.
That was before Cory and I came on board.
Right, so, you know, I agree, this certainly sounds like a program we want to continue to have on our books and be able to fund. So I'm a hundred percent behind it. I think it's, it's wonderful to offer this program to our children. I think it's a, a great opportunity for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, more for us, I think. Is this something that, and I'm kind of going over my skis here now, that could be open to outside of the district as a pay per? Like our students, we would not charge, but could it be something that could be opened up to neighboring districts and say, well, sure, but you might have to contribute because there are students, there are teachers, there are.
Because it's not part, so if it was part of E S Y programming, then no. Or in terms of charging families, but because this is, as long as it is an optional plan, it is something that we probably, we could, it'd be worth looking into because off the top of my head, I don't, nothing jumps out as to what, that would be, nothing would be prohibited to that. It would just be making sure that we have the right, you know, releases and things and liability. So things that we already do. But off the top of my head, we, I think we could offer it to others. But I also know that there were plenty of families or students who would have qualified for the programming that would have pushed us to, to, to fuller numbers with that. But again, then saying, okay, if that, if that is there and the, the faculty and staff is also there and or if, hey, if for the low, low bargain price of, we could then open up another section or bring in people to help sustain that for all students. It, it, it's something that we could look into, but so off the top of my head, I believe so. But we can look into it.
I'd really like to get our numbers up too. Again, because of the late start, the numbers were a little lower than I would have liked to have seen them. I'd also like to possibly, so the children that were invited this year all worked with a reading specialist. And in some years, we've invited children who had a classroom-only plan. So they were really cusp-y. I'd really love to see those kids be invited next year because those, those kids, you know, getting them off that plan and up that little boost could be just enough over the summer. Sometimes kids are just almost there, June comes around. So I would like to see our numbers increase.
First of all, I, I am emphatic in wanting to see this program continue and expand. So you let us know what you need. Yet the money tree in the back of the administration building has not been producing at the rate it was supposed to. Secondly, I would like to thank you two particularly for your work in this because this doesn't come together from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty for eight weeks, uh, four weeks, whatever it was. This has a lot of work behind the scenes. And I'm very grateful that we got, it looks like seventeen of our district educators and assistants to participate in this program. So I'm grateful to them too because they gave up a month of summer. And I think what we're doing, looking at the whole child and every little piece of your program, you know, fed, playtime, the camps, helping the families out that couldn't leave work to go and get a child in the middle of the day. I'm very grateful, so I will begin working on getting this going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now we'll bring Mr. Shields up to talk a little bit about credit recovery. And again, thank you so much to Felicity and Cory for their dedication, their commitment, their passion and their excellent way at really telling the deeper story behind such a remarkable program. So with that, it's been a long day. So they had the pleasure of bookending their day, listening to me talk, so. So thank you. And Mr. Shields?
Thank you guys so much. It's been a long time since I've been here presenting credit recovery. The last time Bob McCarthy was my principal and it was two thousand and fourteen. Okay? Some time. Slide for me, please. Next slide. Credit Recovery Coordinator, that is the position that I have. Our program runs Monday through Friday, eight-thirty to eleven, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, July eighth through July twenty-sixth. We are a three-week program. It is a truncated timetable. At the high school, it is very important to keep it within three weeks. One, you have students working, you have students going on trips, you have students playing sports, you have students in driver's ed. All of these really kind of put in a factor of this limited time. So by having it in three weeks and not in four and five, we're able to really kind of get it in and get them through and get them on with the rest of their summer, which you can imagine they're looking forward to. Location, of course, is in the high school and it goes without saying, and I know we've built them up a few times today, Mr. Mahoney, but also, you know, tech director Doug Snow. Even Chartwells are huge for me every year, putting this program together. I could not do it without them. As you know, that high school gets very, very warm. It is a very tough place in July. If you would have come, you would have said, wow, you've made this tolerable for students. It actually worked, okay? Next slide, please. Overview of Credit Recovery. It provides opportunities for students to recoup credit lost throughout the school year. Students continue to build a foundation towards proficiency in this. Students also close gaps in educational achievement. And students build on success in preparation for future courses in South Kingston High School. I will be quite honest with you, this program is our safety net. And I know we, we talk about S R funds and we talk about this program being financed. This program goes back quite a long time. We financed this program differently in the past, but this program is our catch-all to help students. And we have students of all walks of life in our program. And I'm gonna get to that in a minute. Next slide, please. The history a little bit, two thousand and twelve, Principal McCarthy said, listen, I'm gonna put together a program, would you like to be in charge of it? I was crazy enough to say yes. We're here, okay? It's been a long time. The program has run for thirteen consecutive years, even during COVID, servicing approximately eight hundred and fifty-four students during that time. Okay? Since two thousand and twenty, the program has averaged about fifty-four students each summer. And students come to credit recovery from all different walks for a variety of reasons. It's not always academic. Many a times, it could be medical, they missed time. And because they missed time, unfortunately, they weren't able to get a course completed. So we're able to get them in. Also, other times, there could be truancy challenges throughout the year. Okay, so it's not just academic pieces that we look at in credit recovery. Next slide, please. I like to look at the A B Cs. It's kind of what I started with. And when this program originally began, I wrote this out and I thought these pieces would be most critical. And this is what we stuck with. A, our attendance is mandatory in this program. They must be there every day. The only way they are not there is if it is court order or there is a medical emergency. Our attendance besides those two was a hundred percent. We are not less than a hundred percent. The students need to be there, they need to work to get this grade to be proficient. Behavior, following all the key rules of South Kingston High School and all the things that we normally expect are high expectations. And finally, communication. This is something that's a little bit different. It would be different from, you know, a credit recovery program to, you know, a program we reported earlier. Daily feedback. Constantly, I will contact parents via phone, via email, every day. Give them updates. This is what I'm seeing in the algebra class, this is what I'm seeing in the English class. We need to work a little bit more at night on science. So that constant communication, one of the moms said to me, we talk to you more than our relatives. So that constant communication, one of the moms said to me, we talked to you more than our relatives. And I'm like, I know. Uh, but it's a good thing. It's a good thing. It keeps, it keeps balance to the program. Keeps the teachers engaged with the students. It keeps everybody accountable. So having that is very, very important. Next slide, please. The faculty and staff that I have, some have been with me for up to twelve years. Uh, it's been an unbelievably dedicated group. I could roll a ball down the hallway and I would be honored to have my kid go to any one of those classes. In fact, my son or daughter, I've had many of those people. So I, I am honored to have them. Um, they are excellent role models. They're team players and they always place the needs of students first. We have eight content teachers throughout math, social studies, science, English, health, P E and Adventum. We have one reading specialist and one math interventionist. Next slide, please. Data from this year. I will present a couple of slides on our data. Fifty-one students in the program. They recouped one hundred and five classes lost. One hundred and five. There are five additional courses going on right now that were not completed yet. That students are still in the process of doing on Adventum. So they're still in the process of working on those and they'll be able to finish this form. Also, we had two students, uh, who worked towards their senior project proposals during the program. In the past, we had portfolio. I had many students come and we would have groups and they would actually present their senior project portfolio in summer programming during credit recovery. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown and I don't want to go through all of them, but I do want to highlight and show you what I tried to really. Focus with the students. And then we, you know, the schedule's not easy to make, but we're able to kind of manipulate it enough. We're able to get a couple of, you know, core pieces in. Hundred and five courses, but ninety-two are core classes. So ninety-two in English, math, science, social studies, world language. That is considered our core. And you can see the numbers right there that speak for themselves. We also had nine students in, uh, credit in health and physical education as well. Next slide, please. As I mentioned earlier, this is, this is our safety net to help students. It has been very, very successful. I have had thirteen assistant principals. Countless people at central admin. I've reported, I think, at central admin to, you know, everyone from assistant super on down and. Um, I, I will give a big shout out to, uh, you know, um. Danielle, who is absolutely wonderful to report to, uh, this year. And just a lot of success and a lot of help, a lot of support they provided for us. Okay. So. This program has been successful through many administrations. And one thing I always go back to are the, kind of the words that Bob and he said to me at the time, if you want this to succeed, Matt, you're going to have to own it. You're going to have to really work for this. And you're going to get teachers in there that want to be there, that want to work hard. So it just goes to show you that that building is really kind of pulling together and those people haven't let you down. They've been there with the kids the entire time. That's been their first priority.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Do you have an idea of how many kids? Made graduation because of this program that would not have walked without it?
So we did the numbers a few years ago and our numbers have fluctuated with our enrollment. Uh, in the past, if you went back to the years, I specifically speak of two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, we has had as high as ninety students in this program. When we did it a few years ago, um, we kind of played out our numbers and teased them out. Our graduation rate would be far less than what it is. And I don't want to really give the number, but it was far less than what it is.
But I think that's important because graduation rates are very used to statistics and when looking at, um. It, it, you know. High schools. It's a, it's a, an important data point, right? So I think that data would be really important to know if. I mean, I don't know what our graduation, it's in the nineties.
Yes.
And if it was only eighty-two instead of ninety-seven.
Seventy-seven percent.
Seventy-seven. Thank you. I, it's, it's important to know. That's how important this program is. Thanks.
It is a vital program, uh, for the cost. Um, Mr. Pedraza did say it's about forty-one thousand dollars for a hundred and five classes. And I will tell you, the, the teachers there, they really, I think one of the biggest parts that I want you to take away from this too. The students that finish, they now have another ally that they know will help them during the year. They're not afraid. They, they walk out now. They're not going to take a survey and ninety-four percent are going to say, hey, I'd love being here. What teenager wants to give up? You know, three weeks of their summer. That's not going to happen. But they're going to give you a fist bump on the way out. You know, they're going to give you a hug on the way by. They're going to stop in your classroom and see you. So many of those teachers have those relationships with them. And when those students are struggling with something, if they don't go to the counselor, they don't go here. Many times it's our summer credit recovery teachers that they go to. And they offer them support and they say, look, let's work this out. So it's very, very important. Any other questions that you guys have?
Um. Think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Um. When you have a student come in, um. Who did not, and I have to speak to my area of expertise, did not, for example, pass Algebra One. They just, it through your program, they just fill in the holes because they are, they learned something. In, in the nine months they were in Algebra One. So you just fill in the holes for what they didn't learn, basically?
Yes. So that's, that's a great point. So we look at what do we need to get them to proficiency? But also the programs that we run, we want them to take away the information that's going to help them build for the class the following year. So it's specifically in our math courses. Algebra One, Algebra Two, Geometry, those are the three classes that are pretty much taught. We use Delta Math. Each teacher will use that program. And we have a teacher in front of them. They work with each student and we have a math interventionist that goes between the rooms and they work on the skills. And they look at, okay, where did you not do well? Let's look at your midterm. Let's look at this. What did we not do here with, you know, with decimals or this piece or this piece? And really that's what we try to attack.
The, uh, another question, kind of similar to the line of thought with the previous presentation is around, um, transportation. And then my question for you is. Attendance is a hundred percent mandatory. But it's not a hundred percent of the kids who may need this who attend. Is that correct? Like there, there may be other kids who are not coming to this, who should, uh, but for one reason or another, they are not coming. Um, how, how do the kids get captured to come in? And is it really just like an agreement between the school and the parents to make sure these kids get here?
So some great points. First, I would start with. The first part of transportation. We during this program have not provided transportation. Transportation at the high school level has been on the family to get the student here. Um, we have. Since we began, that's how we, we ran this. So we don't have the incurring cost. Of the other program, which is why we're at forty-one thousand dollars. We don't have that. Uh, there are students who do not take summer program for various reasons. Three or four students, I, I spoke with parents this year. I can just top of my head, we're going on vacations during that time. We're going to miss two weeks. We're going to miss a week. And with that truncated timetable, it's just too much time not to be, you know, not to be there. They have got to be there to get some of those skills. So that becomes some of the issue. Okay? Um, the other part that you had asked was. As far as, you know, just repeat it one more time for me. I think there was one other part that you, I want to make sure I got it right.
I think it's more of like the kids. Of the group of kids who might not come, but they really need to, like, how do you capture those families and, and request them to, to come?
So that process starts usually, and I'm a little bit later, uh, as we're working off report cards. And so when that report card comes, I'm meeting with the director of guidance at the high school. Well, I've already met with her. We've already looked at quarter one, quarter two, quarter three. We have some writings on the wall. We have some ideas, but we don't know everything yet. We have to wait for those final grades to come in. Then the first line of defense is the counselors contact parents. Phone calls, emails, your son, daughter is eligible for summer program this year. This is a course that they can recruit. We do that just as grades come in. And we have about a three week buffer, so it gives enough time for families to say, okay. We, we're going to go forward with this. We're going to do this or, or we're going to, we have a vacation planned. We can't do it. And sometimes that pops up and that happens. Um, this year we ran into a couple of driver's eds, which you can imagine it's a popular time for driver's ed class. It's a popular time for sports camps. You know, so the attendance policy has to be there to ensure that. They're getting the education they need in these classes, but at the same time, it doesn't prohibit them. Usually it's something else. Many times the, what I've heard in the past, it wasn't so much this year, but in the past was my work schedule. Work schedule. Now I didn't want to report it out this year, um, because we've just started it. But I am excited that we, for the first time, offered a couple of classes with the Johnny Cake Center in the afternoon. With one of our teachers. And that's something we might be building going forward. Where we might be able to do a class a little bit later if someone's working in the morning. And Johnny Cake has partnered with us on this and they, you know, worked with, uh, Dr. McGare and one of our teachers was there and was able to help one of the students. Got them through a class a little bit later in the afternoon. And I think that is something that is absolutely wonderful and we're going to continue to work on that partnership going forward.
Um, I'm just curious again of the makeup of the, of the students there. Do you, I mean, I would. I would assume that once kids are getting closer to graduation, there's an urgency to them. So maybe you have more. Eleventh graders and a lot more twelfth graders. I mean, I'm just curious if that's what you see.
It's, the makeup changes year to year and sometimes it is. Senior class heavy, but many times not. This year there were more freshmen than we had in senior or junior students that were there. And really, if you're able to help them get the credits freshman year, data shows that student will graduate on time. So it is very important to offer something and get the students in ninth grade while you can. Because as you go and you have multiple failures and there's, there's multiple courses you have to make up, it becomes harder and harder. I would say overall, the, the students that are there that are seniors are more motivated. Yes, or going to be seniors are more motivated. And many of them say, Mr. Shields, I'm not going to do this again. You know, I'm not going to do this again. Not going to put myself in this position or. Hey, listen, I, I had these things go on. I, I, I threw it. We're done. We're ready. I'm going to go forward.
Um, one of your, um. Pieces of data says that there are five additional courses. That are still in progress. So those students are in the process of completing those courses now.
Yes.
And into a, after the school year starts.
Yes, those students were in Adventum courses. Adventum is online programming. So we have an Adventum teacher. And courses usually in Adventum run from world language or, um, business and elective courses. And if those courses aren't finished. Administration has allowed them to stop and then continue that class in the fall during the P L T. So they're allowed to finish up that course and get that course done. So they don't lose what they've earned so far in that class. So we still have five students who are working towards recruiting those classes.
So, um. As I recall, when this program first started, and I think I'm the only one.
I think you are the only one.
I, I think everybody else was somewhere else, but I'm crazy. So, um, we were doing it through the school year. On Saturdays. So, um. I'm wondering if like the students that Ms. Mastinanti was speaking about that, and you also a- added to that. The students that would, this program would be good for them. That don't go for, you know, the vacation, the work schedule, you know, whatever it is. If there's the possibility of getting, you know, maybe one course through the school year, I, I just.
Yeah, it's a great point. This year. Through grants, we were able to offer a pilot program at South Kingston High School for unit recovery. At the end of semester two. We had twenty students in this program. We were able to get them up to proficiency in their courses. That was the first time that we've tried that. You are correct. In the past, we did have a program for four or five years, Saturday programming. I was part of that program as well. Uh, it was an excellent program. It ran very, very well. Uh, I think it became. We can do one, not the other. Which one can we get more from? And the Saturday ran into issues again around schedules, athletics, practices, and I think also lots of work. So that became more of an issue there for the Saturday. And it just seemed the Sunday, I know the, uh, the, um, summer program as far as credit recovery just seemed to work a little bit better. And that's why this was stressed going forward and Saturday was kind of put on the shelf. The pilot program, uh, was very successful. You know, we hope to continue it. See where we go from there.
All right. Thank you for that information and, um, about the Saturday program. Thank you.
So I, I just want to say thank you. Um, I knew your voice very well. Um, I never had a face to it until this morning. Ha, you started talking to me and I'm like, oh yeah, you're the credit recovery teacher, right? So, but anyway, um, I want to thank you. Um, for coordinating such a great program. And, um, I will say that the attendance that you had. For this program was at the hundred percent as you speak to. Um, I had seen many students out there in the morning, waiting at that side door to get in and do what they needed to do. And they also seem. Happy to do it. You know, so it makes me wonder if those students prefer. That little time. Little group of students working because I know if I speak for my own, that would be exactly what he would rather have. Than to go to school for a four day and be in a classroom and just having to socialize, right? But anyway, thank you again for such a great program and I look forward to hearing more about it. But not with you being on the other end of the phone.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Thanks, sir.
And just in a very, very brief closing, I just wanted to once again thank. Mr. Shields and, um, Ms. Carol and Ms. Lennon for joining us to speak to the robust summer programs. And again. Um, just I can't help but be reminded of some of, um, Mr. Pedraza's remarks this morning around. You know, some of those larger themes around being safe and being engaged and being future focused. And certainly when I think about the robust programmatic offerings happening over the summer. You know, I'm certainly, you know, uh, proud of the work and, uh, really can't speak highly enough about the. Level of commitment and dedication demonstrated by our faculty and staff. So again, I want to thank them and I thank you for your patience as we. Showcased these outstanding programs. So with that, turn it back over to Superintendent Pedraza for the remainder of the superintendent's report. So thank you.
You, Mr. Seager.
That concludes my report.
I have a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
I'll make a motion to accept superintendent's report.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. And now we will move. Back, back to, um, community comment. Oh. Sweet. Is that it?
Ah, ah, okay. Now, hold on. If you ever, Mr. Pedraza, as the year goes on, right, these meetings get, start to get really long. This is what I suggest. Bring a couple of these babies up there and swap them out for those chairs you're sitting in. It'll definitely shorten the meeting. All right. So, um. I'm here just to talk briefly about the test well. Geothermal test well. So, so I've said before. ru- the the school building authority uh mandated now that new schools going forward have to be sustainable as as much as possible, sustainable, green schools, net zero, carbon neutral, all those, all those buzzwords, buzz phrases. So the only, the only technology available to get our new high school to where it would be a net zero school is geothermal, heating and cooling. Now, there's, I sent this information to you some months ago, but there's a new, a brand new school under construction in Massachusetts. Um, it's a high school. It's larger than ours. It's on a very, very compact piece of land. Uh, it's so, it's so compact that they had to put, uh, they had to build an underground garage for for their parking. That school is going to be heated and cooled by four wells, four one thousand foot wells. Now, I was surprised when I saw the specs for this test well that it's gonna be done next month, I believe. It's gonna be eight hundred feet deep now. If you kind of think about it, if you if you have four wells, a thousand feet deep that take care of a school that's larger than ours, it's possible that things go well with a well. Um, it would mean our well field, the size of the well field, the number of wells would actually have to be uh, put in the ground to to take care of the school would be not as many as we thought originally. So keep our fingers crossed. But here's the best part. And it was, um, it was, uh, verified at the last school billing committee meeting. This test well, if it, if it's if it's successful, unfortunately, I'm, I'm not, I have no, I have no doubt that it's gonna be successful in my mind. But anyway. So this, this well then would become the first well of the well, the first one of the wells that would be drilled to heat and cool the new high school. So it's not, it's not something that's gonna be just, you're not spending a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars on something that's not gonna be used anymore. It's gonna be, it will be used. So I know you were a little concerned last time about where the money was coming from, but I hope that maybe puts that, puts that to rest. Um, I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. If there are no other community comments, I will close community comment and move on to school committee business.
So, um, next item on the agenda is item five, school committee business. Item A, a discussion and action on a fundraiser for the South Kingston High School football digital discount card. Mr. Lynch?
So, um, Jerry Zanella approached me, wanted to do a fundraiser, uh, for extra equipment, um, that I can't afford, to be quite honest. So, um, you know, anything about football coaches are all into gadgets and and sleds and tackling dummies and this, that, the other thing. And so that's what he's trying to raise money for that type of equipment. Also to, um, he he bought this year, um, shorts and T-shirts for all the players. And he also will give sweatshirts at the end of the year and a a small banquet. So that's all that he's trying to accomplish with with the fundraiser that he's doing. Yes.
I don't know if there are other questions and comments, but I'm happy to make a motion to approve the S K football discount card fundraiser.
Second.
Comment, I know this was a successful fundraiser last year.
Yes.
Um, and I know it's very similar in format. So, um, if folks have questions about that, it is something that has been done before, and I know you supported it.
Yeah, and and I should explain it to a little bit more. It's going through adrenaline fundraising, which is adrenaline fundraising is the official uh fundraiser of the Interscholastic League. So they're all embedded with that. So, um, and we've used them before, and they've done a good job for us.
Steve, I just, I I'm not quite picking up from the description here, and I I trust I have them on tour, but I'm just, uh, they're writing down email addresses of family members. Um, how does that lead to fundraising? Is that they're they're soliciting funds from those?
Yeah, so it's, 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 that's how they're, that's how it's, it's gone from the days of, you know, canning, if you will, standing outside of Stop and Shop or Shaw's to, um, the discount cards that kids were going store to store to sell to now more of an online, um, you know, they'll put a platform together explaining what we're trying to raise money for, and you put it out to friends and family and and they just, we've had a lot of success. We just did one with, um, with girls soccer. I I wanna say that they raised about eight thousand dollars. So it's a quick and an easy fundraiser for us. Um, and it do- and it doesn't put a lot of, it puts more, it used to be where our kids were doing all the work. Now it's more of the fundraising company doing more of the work where our kids just give them some email addresses and 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 they're doing more of the legwork.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to the team. Next item on the agenda, item B, FY twenty five budget amendments. Mr. Patrick.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee. So you have before you another budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty five. There's a lot of information here, but I'll try to distill it down for you. Essentially, uh, we're just reallocating some maintenance and utility expenses from Peacedale pre-K to simply Peacedale, um, the building location. Uh, when I uploaded the budget into the accounting system, I was just a pinch too precise. Um, when we pay those bills, we pay them by building, not by the program within the building necessarily. So essentially just moving, uh, like I said, utility expenses and maintenance, maintenance expenses from Peacedale pre-K just simply into Peacedale. So if you look in that, um, account column, that's our UCOA string. Uh, you'll notice the second segment there, zero nine one zero seven, that's the Peacedale pre-K location code. And then zero three one zero seven is the Peacedale building code, Peacedale Elementary. So, uh, and again, you look at the bottom line, everything stays the same along the bottom line, just taking it from pre-K and putting it in the Peacedale building location because it just makes more sense. So.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five budget amendment.
Second, but I have a question. I I'm, I just wanna know, um, does this zero out all of the preschool findings?
Uh, just those, uh, object codes. So just for utilities.
Okay, so they'll do their own supplies, that kind of thing.
Supplies and salaries are all still states put, exactly.
It's only building related.
Building related.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you.
Excellent.
Um, is the next item on the agenda, the policy two oh, two, three, two oh five? Back with you?
That is me again. Yes, thank you very much. So, uh, if you look at the policy thirty two oh five, essentially that we adopted back in January, you go to section two, purchasing limits. You go down to section C, number five. It says dollar amounts noted in this section shall be adjusted annually at the same rate as the Boston Regional Consumer Price Index. Those data were published, um, last week. And you'll notice that the year-over-year July, uh, CPI index increased three point five percent. So I applied that percentage to our purchasing thresholds. And so the previous threshold, uh, for small purchases uh, for non-construction, uh, expenses was ten thousand dollars. It's now ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for construction. Um, projects is twenty thousand seven hundred dollars. And then the, uh, the thresholds within the small purchase threshold I adjusted by those amounts as well, which just requires increasing documentation um, for purchase requisitions. So I'm simply asking the committee to approve this annual amendment to the purchasing policy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy three twenty five, three two oh five, purchasing annual consumer price index update.
Second. And I just have something else to say. I'm sorry. When I saw this, my one thing that came to my mind was, what was the original one? So now you've just said it. But it would help maybe to have it lined through.
Oh, sure.
So that the ten thousand was still there, and then we could see it was ten thousand three hundred and fifty.
Yep, great point.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion, um, a school project update.
So I don't have too much to share unless, Mr. Bohony, you wanna come up again and join me. And are you, Mr. Lynch? You are comfortable on the microphone tonight, tonight. Um, no, we we just basically, our school building committee is continued to meet throughout the summer. Um, we did meet on this past Thursday, further discussion around the geothermal, um, test well. Um, we're moving, obviously moving forward with that. Um, we had some discussion around, um, setting up some dates to discuss the actual plans that our slam collaborative, along with Phil Conti, are starting to put together so that we have something tangible to to really look at and review. Um, it's still in discussion, still in development, um, nothing concrete to look at just yet, um, but it is coming soon. Um, just especially like that, a first draft. Um, we do have a forum, another public forum that we will be presenting, uh, to the community, and I believe that's going to be in October. Um, and in the meantime, we are shooting to have a work session with the town council, school building committee, and the school committee. I believe September twenty sixth, uh, we are looking to go, uh, a work session before their, uh, town council meeting from six to seven or seven thirty with a woman who is meeting with us to discuss, um, optional funding for, um, sustainable schools, green schools. Um, there's a, you know, there's, um, federal funding, state funding that she's going to give us kind of an overview that could help supplement if we go green. Um, yeah, let me double, I just wanna reiterate to make sure that we're we're planning for, I'm sorry, it's September twenty third. It's a Monday. And it is, uh, would be a six o'clock start at a town, at the town council meeting, and it would be a work session. Um, it would be presented to town council, school committee, and school building committee, all in all, as many people who could attend to be there so that everybody's getting the same information at the same time. The presentation is not gonna guarantee that we qualify or receive that funding, but it is, this woman is going to be presenting to us on ways we could potentially um, supplement our funding. Um, I think that's it. Six P M. Sorry. Yeah, yeah. Um, town, the town is coordinating that out now and putting the final dots on that. I forget something?
Didn't forget anything. You you listed off about ten things, and there, we'll just give a few more. Um, just an update to our website is, is they're making a big turnover. It's almost completed by Left Field and the, uh, company they hired per their contract. Um, and there, we've been able to see some previews of that and kinda, um, see, and I believe it's the second week of September. I believe they're shooting forward to get, make that live. And again, I encourage everybody in the public to please reach out via email, via the website. You know, we, we go when we present, uh, in our meetings, we read all the emails and we, we try to take in every question and present it to our whole group to discuss him with our experts. And then the other one I just wanted to highlight, as part of the geothermal study, we have had a great discussions about all the but, the butters of the property and neighbors, and we wanna be good neighbors to everyone who's lived next to the high school for all these years and everybody who's gonna live next to the the new high school. Uh, so we have had robust discussions on, you know, getting the butters involved, meetings, site visits, and everything of that nature. That's all. That's all I got.
Miss, thank you, Miss Terry. She's reminding me, our, our meetings for the summer, uh, took place, um, in the mornings, uh, to kind of take care of, to, so everybody on the board could could meet. We have now gone back to evening meetings. It will start with our very next meeting. Um, and this time, um, we had been meeting Thursday evenings. We are going to be meeting on Wednesdays from now on. And instead of the meetings being at four o'clock, they are gonna be at six o'clock. So it'll be Wednesday, six P M, a town hall chambers going forward. Um, our very first evening meeting will be September fourth, um, at six. Um, it will, it will be interesting because it is the first week of school opening, um, but we will, we will get it done. Um, it, this date, uh, this day of the week was chosen so that it won't, so that if there are any decisions that the town council or the school committee need to make, we have the meeting on a Wednesday night preceding the next, um, town and school meetings. Um, it was opposite last time, and so some, we lost many weeks because we would have to, we would meet after the meeting, and then we'd have to wait two more weeks for the next meeting. So we did a little shift. Um, so we, yeah, exactly. Yes. Yep. So, um, so that was the only other big change that I'm thinking of. But I I do wanna also reiterate what, um, Brian, you just said about with the butters, um, especially with the drilling of the test well to start. Um, it will be kind of like things to come because it will be, it will be intrusive to our neighbors. Um, but our, um, Left Field is looking to have meetings, um, to give as much information, to give as much heads up as possible notices. And we're, we're doing a large radius, so it won't just be the folks who are in the corner of Hazard Field. We're, we're going like School Street, Columbia Brown, like we're, we're doing our due diligence to make sure that any possible neighbor who could be impacted from sound to vibration to whatever it is, um, that we're, that we're communicating with them as best we can. So I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions for us.
Any further questions? Yep. Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes at nine oh six.